I am calling to order the North Liberty Library Board of Trustees meeting for March 18th, 2024.
Excuse me.
First item of business, do we have any additions or changes to the agenda? Okay. Uh, second item, public comment.
Actually, can I back up?
Yeah.
The, oh, you see, the one you have printed out should be the one, but this, it looks like they didn't get it updated on the board packet. Online, the one that they pulled. I did send them a fresh one, but it didn't get in here. So if you want to, I don't know if we need to, since this was the one that was in the board packet. Just note that we have the new, or the old business of those two items. That which are the statement of concern and the collection development updates.
Okay. Okay, I will, uh, I'll pull my phone at the end and just in case I forget, I know you're always on top of things. Um, so there's no one from the public. I'm not discrediting you guys. From the public. Uh, and item number three, we have new board member. Welcome.
Thank you.
Please introduce yourself and give us your social security, your work history.
Oh goodness. All right. So, hi everyone, Angie Fouts. I am relatively new to North Liberty. We moved here about a year and a half ago. Um, in my day job, I am a nonprofit attorney for a law firm, so I advise organizations on governance and grant making. Um, and charitable activities. I am passionate about the library and its role in the community. And so I was really excited to join the board and Jenny was kind enough to give me, go through a bunch of questions today and give me a quick overview. And so it sounds like it's a good group and I'm looking forward to being involved.
I didn't ask where you, where did you, from, where did you come?
We were in Cedar Falls prior to this, so not that far, but far enough that it was change of schools, change of doctors, change of all the things.
Everything.
All the things, yep.
Do we want to run through and just introduce yourselves?
Sure.
Sure. Um, I'm Brady Bird. This is my second year on the board. Yeah, I've been in North Liberty for about, I want to say, seven years.
I'm Jack Abels. This is my first year on the board. I've been in the North Liberty Corvale area for going on 22 years now.
I'm Scott Clemens. Um, this is maybe my second and a half term or term and a half. Um, mostly I've been a library volunteer for probably more than 20 years on Wednesday nights. So come see me if Brady does with his.
It's swimming lessons typically is what puts us there.
All right, awesome.
And the library, of course.
Snatted bonus.
Yes, well, we have to stop in and see the guinea pig.
Matilda?
Matilda, yes.
All right. Uh, item number four, approval of minutes for January.
I don't think we can actually do that because you don't have a quorum to do it.
No, we don't. Great.
Nope, because not everybody was here.
Sweet. Okay, so we'll just skip that one, I guess.
Note to put that in the packet next month.
All right. Item number five, staff introduction slash training.
Hi, I'm Corey, Corey Brace. I am the Assistant Adult Services Librarian at the North Liberty Library. Um, I volunteered at the library in high school, uh, was part time for the past five years and just started full time in January. So it's been very exciting. Um, then I have Nick, our adult services librarian here with me today. Uh, and we're going to talk to you a little bit about our 55 plus connections programming, our social connections for North Liberty's older adults. So, um, according to the 2022 American Community Survey, 7.3% of North Liberty's population is over 65 years of age, which is over a thousand people, and that's not even counting those in the 55 to 64 range or individuals who are residents of surrounding towns who utilize the North Liberty Community Center's resources and programs. So we have quite a few people who use our library, uh, who are older than 55, which is great. Um, today, we wanted to talk to you a little bit about what resources and programs the library contributes, uh, to for these seniors and why those programs are so important. So first, what do we do? Um, it's kind of tiny. You can't really see it very well, but, uh, we've got three major programs I wanted to talk about. The first is our newest program, the Tuesday Gathering. Uh, we just started offering it on March 5th. Uh, at this program, we have a rotating schedule of activities, including board games, crafts, puzzles, book discussions and movies. Uh, it's a great chance to sit down and talk with friends or strangers while enjoying snacks and coffee. Uh, we've only had two gatherings so far. Um, with the third tomorrow, it's jigsaw puzzles if anyone would like to join us. Uh, but both weeks have been a great opportunity for socialization and learning. There's even an impromptu euchre tournament that happened, uh, the first time that we did it because there were some folks who didn't know how to play euchre and, but that was what everyone was interested in doing, so they taught each other. It was very fun. Uh, then we have the pop-up libraries, uh, which are very different from the other two programs that we're talking about. Instead of bringing folks into the library, we bring the library to them. Uh, between Nick and I, we do three pop-ups. Uh, around town, we go to Keystone Place, the North Liberty Living Center and the pantry. Uh, both Keystone and the Living Center are senior living facilities, um, which is kind of where the, where that plays into this. But we do have some seniors who join us at the pantry sometimes as well. Um, we do the pop-ups because library materials and resources should be available to all members of our community, regardless of their ability to drive or leave their home. Um, so we have several folks who don't leave, leave the facilities that they live in. They don't drive anymore. Um, and so it's nice to just be able to bring books, DVDs, puzzles, whatever to them, um, so that they can use those. Uh, it's also a great chance to get informational materials like cookbooks, political commentary, gardening books, uh, books about hobbies, that kind of thing to people who might not have, uh, access to or be able to use a computer. Um, so we bring like recipes to them where we, you know, you and I might Google something and just be like, I need a recipe for this. Uh, other folks may not be, they might not have access to a computer. Um, so it's good to bring those materials to them. And then the last program I wanted to talk about, but certainly not the least, uh, we have our Friday lunches. This is a longstanding program that the library partners with the rec center on. Every Friday, uh, seniors who have registered get a discounted catered lunch from a local restaurant and get to enjoy it together at the rec center. After lunch, we alternate between, between playing bingo or having a speaker to talk to them about different things like local aging agencies, scam protection, healthy aging, art history. We've had someone, uh, uh, present on like Confucianism and the history of the Iowa Prairies and just anything that we think they might be interested in. Um, a couple of weeks ago, we had a, one of our seniors, he actually is a musician. And so he brought his guitar and played the songs that he'd written. Everybody had a great time listening to him. It was really fun. Um, so just kind of anything we think that the seniors might find interesting, we set, set up a presenter to come talk to them.
Chair yoga.
What?
Chair yoga.
Yes, we do a lot of chair yoga. Kelly at the library, she, uh, does yoga and she adjusts it to where you don't have to leave your chair. Um, so she does that quite a few times a year, uh, with the seniors. All right, on to why we do what we do, and I'm gonna yield to Nick here for a minute.
So I get to tell you about the exciting stuff, the statistics. So I spoke in October about, uh, the epidemic of loneliness in regards to the programming that we, we do in terms of adult services. So the topic of, uh, community and, and connection as a, as a part of, uh, direct health importance began somewhere around the 2000s. I'm going to give you some background on, um, how all of this came to be. Uh, most well-known that came from that is the Blue Zone Project. Uh, they looked at six communities around the world who lived the longest out of everybody in the world. Uh, determined, uh, nine different aspects that all of these communities shared in common. Four of those nine aspects, almost half of them dealt with family, connection, belonging. And basically it comes down to having people that look out for you and having people that, that need you. You have to have a purpose to get up in the morning, basically. And that's what we do in libraries is we build community. Our David Lankis, the author of The Alice of New Librarianship is common, uh, well known for a, a tweet that went, uh, big in library world. It says, "Bad, bad libraries build only collections. Good libraries build only services. Great libraries build communities." Uh, the research on this lack of connection that we're feeling, um, in our society uh, really stems from not that long ago, maybe five, six years ago, around 2017, 2018, where research through, uh, a couple of different institutions found how directly harmful isolation was. Uh, basically what they found is that there's about a 50% increase in chance of dementia, roughly 30% chance of, uh, of heart disease and stroke each. Um, and what's more is that this is prevalent in about half of our population. So, um, they will, a lot of the media outlets, uh, cludge, uh, clung on to the idea that this is more harmful than smoking 15 cigarettes a day or, um, drinking six drinks a day. So that's a lot of smoking and drinking that half of our population is doing. I looked it up. That was actually something that happened in the 60s, not the drink, the smoking. I was like, did people ever go this far? So yeah, in the 60s when it was okay, people actually did smoke that much. That was a side, side info. Lastly, this past year, the, the idea committee, the Inclusion Diversity Equity and Accessibility Committee conducted a series of focus groups. And one of the topics that resonated with the senior group was, um, that while North Liberty is a heavily, uh, dominated community of young families, what was emerging is that there are an increasing number of seniors that are moving here to be next to their families. They're downsizing and they're moving close to their kids, um, which means of course they don't have a social network here. They're not, they're not from this area. Um, and many of them had recently lost a spouse. So in terms of being new to the area, they were also missing their partner that they'd had for many years. In that, they also directly asked us for more social gatherings. So when you tell a programming librarian that there's a group of people who will come to the library regularly with minimal effort on our part, um, it's usually a pretty easy sell. So that's the numbers, um, and I will, I will turn it back over to Corey.
So with those numbers, um, I wanted to let, or let me tell you one of the reasons that I personally find these programs so important. This is Carolyn Kay. She is my grandma. She and my grandpa Roland, they were some of those seniors who moved to North Liberty to be closer to kids and grandkids like myself. Um, they moved here several years ago, um, actually to the North Liberty Living Center, which is one of the places that we do pop-ups. Um, in 2019, they, because of increasing health demands, they moved in with my parents. Uh, and then later in that same year, my grandpa passed away. So grandma still lived with my parents and younger siblings, but things were different. She'd moved away from her friends in Moringo and was now a widow. Then 2020 happened and everyone, all ages everywhere, got hit with a bit more loneliness than we were used to. In 2021, I was asked to help out with the Friday lunch program and quickly realized that it was something that grandma should be involved in. I invited her to come along with me and though I suspect she only planned on going to one to humor me, uh, her first lunch went better than I could have expected. We got there early since I had to do some prep for the program, uh, and grandma took a seat at one of the tables. Five minutes later, one of our regulars came in, uh, and she sat down next to grandma, introduced herself and then invited her to go to a Christian women's club the next week. Uh, they still get together all the time and they sit together every week on Fridays. And now grandma is one of the regulars and when she doesn't show up, all of the seniors ask me where she is. Where's your grandma? Why isn't grandma here this week? So she has been, definitely been, uh, absorbed into that community. Um, and this Friday group is, it's an incredibly tight knit group, um, but also very welcoming to newcomers. I often see the regulars seeking out newbies to show them the ropes and invite them to sit at their table. And real lasting friendships form at this group. They care about each other, always calling to check on one another, sending get well cards to anyone who needs it, exchanging recipes, going bowling together and so much more. They, they all get together outside of the program, at the program. They're, they're happy to, to be with each other. Our other 55 programming, the Tuesday group and the pop-ups, they foster different, but still important relationships and opportunities for social interaction. And I just wanted to finish today by showing some pictures of the individuals that make these programs as successful as they are. So here's from, uh, 2022 in the summer, we moved senior dining outside, uh, to Penn Meadows Park, uh, and had bingo. And it was open to all ages, so we had some kids there as well. Uh, everybody had a great time. We had delicious food and friendship. And then here's some pictures from our regular Friday program, that top one. We had, uh, some folks, including Angie McConville, uh, come and talk to us about becoming dementia friends, which is just kind of like, uh, a, a quick training to help people better understand individuals with dementia and learn how to aid them better. Um, so we all have our I am dementia friend signs there. Uh, and then the person with the guitar, he is the one who, he's one of the seniors and he presented to us with his music that he wrote. Uh, and then on either side of him, uh, on the left, we have, uh, a compere of Johnson County. They came and talked about their programming and then on the right, um, we have some EMTs, uh, teaching first aid and that kind of thing. So that was very fun. Um, and then this is, like I said, we've only been doing the new program for two weeks. So I don't have a lot of pictures from it, but last Tuesday, we did our tiny art program, which is going on in the library right now. You can pick up a tiny canvas and decorate it however you want. Uh, so we had the new Tuesday group do that. Uh, and I've included examples of their artwork. And it was so fun because they all started out by saying, I, I'm not an artist, you know, I can't, I can't do art. And I said, well, just look at all the fun supplies that we've got here, you know, we've got buttons, we've got sequins, we've got paint, we've got whatever you want. And, you know, pretty soon they were all very much into it and having a great time. So yeah, that's all that I have for you today, but, uh, thank you.
Anyone have questions for Nick and Corey?
I was just gonna ask, how many, about how many folks do you have at any of these?
Yeah, so the new program, the Tuesday one, we, uh, right now have about eight who have been coming regularly. Uh, the senior dining program, we are actually at capacity for that one. The room that we meet in, uh, can comfortably hold 32. We've kind of extended it to 35, just kind of finding corners for folks to sit in. Uh, we've talked about moving it to two rooms and splitting the group, but nobody really wants that because then they have to sit in a separate room from their friends. So it's kind of something that we're working through to figure out what's going on because they continue to invite their friends to come and then folks get waitlisted and it's, yeah, so we are at capacity for that one. And then the pop-ups, I probably have about 10 folks who come to the one that I usually do and yeah, about the same for Nick.
Thank you.
Yeah. Any other questions?
For the Friday, uh, 32, are most of those regulars or does it vary based on topic?
Um, so it, it does vary. We have some folks who will only come on bingo days, uh, and then some folks who will only come when there's a presenter. Uh, it depends on like what food we're having, um, but pretty much the, the majority of them are folks that I've seen before and they just kind of pick when they want to come. Uh, and then we have lately had quite a few new people too. And so that's been really, very exciting to have all the new faces in there.
It's exciting that you have so many railers with your goal of building community. Do you envision that the Tuesday programs will have build like a similar set of railers or is that more of a episodic based on topic type?
Yeah, so we are hoping that, uh, we will kind of build that up as more people learn about it and tell their friends about it. Um, and possibly even kind of, if they're just coming to the Friday thing for the social aspect and not interested in maybe the food or the presentation so much, maybe this would be a good, um, other event for them to go to so that we can kind of alleviate some of the crowd on Friday, um, to have more folks on Tuesday instead. Um, yeah.
I don't think you're doing great work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Does one, do one of you want to talk about the, um, grant that you just got, what you're gonna do with it?
Um, sure. So yeah, we had, uh, well, actually Jenny approached, I think, the, it's the NAPC, which is the National Network of Libraries of Medicine. All of us program center, um, about providing funding for our senior programs. Uh, one of our first thoughts was trying to provide more room, uh, for the senior lunch. Um, we did actually just have a beat the bidder event where we provided, uh, I think, how many was it? 45? 45 and filled the room fairly easily. Um, we did it in the library and had it paid for, but yeah, there's definitely interest there. Um, so we discussed with them and tried to figure out what to do with it, um, to do with that sort of grant funding. And, um, what we decided on, uh, it's got a pretty quick turnaround too. It has to be completed by the end of, of April, um, to deal with their funding year. Um, and so we're going to be getting a new presentation system. Um, what you couldn't see in the, the, in the picture is that this, the projector is actually pretty, uh, not, uh, clear. So we're getting a TV that can rise up, uh, in a, like a rolling mount TV that'll rise up so that the people can see it. The contrast will let them see a lot better. It'll actually have a speaker with a, uh, microphone mixer on it so that the presenters can kind of hook right into the, the speaker system. Um, and they said, oh, by the way, um, you included that the seniors have to pay $5 to attend this. We can't fund, uh, events that are paid, so we're just going to pay for all of the meals throughout April, so.
That's great.
Yeah, so they've been a huge help and we're looking for other ways to, to get the center, uh, involved in programming. They're interested in, in having more involvement, uh, throughout the, the next year as well, so.
Thank you.
That's awesome.
And I'll just brag on them a couple, a little bit more. Um, one of the things I didn't mention was that Mondays, we have a social hour too. Um, that is kind of a mixed crowd now. It used to be, it was called sociable seniors, I think was the first name we had for it. But it's all ages now and we'll sometimes have 18 or 20 or 25 people being really rowdy and loud in our magazine area. And they do not like to go into the meeting rooms as much as we've talked to them about maybe going in there. But they've also developed those organic friendships where they've, and, and they've had a couple of like armchair traveler programs that they've set up themselves. We don't do anything except make coffee for that one. But it's, it's been a great, um, thing. And then they do, you may have seen it on the door, but we do have, um, home delivery as well. Um, and since Nick put that on the door, the sign, or had some of them make a poster for it, the marketing people make a poster. The same day I had two people comment on how wonderful it was that we offered it. They didn't need it. They just wanted us to know that they thought it was great, so.
Do you do any surveys or tracking of participants in the senior programs to gauge, um, progress towards addressing some of the isolation? Issues you identified?
Um, no, but that's a good idea. I mean, we track, we track numbers. Uh, we've been talking about providing more, um, outcomes based, get data gathering. Um, the hard part with that is, is the seniors especially do not like filling out paperwork.
That's fair.
We, yeah, I think they were very unhappy about being asked what they wanted to do at our Tuesday gathering. So, um, I, I mean, it's been mostly organic. We, you, we do get to see the, those connections for them. And yeah, they do, uh, they call each other and make sure they're okay. I mean, we even get in on that too, where, um, we'll be just like, oh man, somebody registered and they didn't show up. So what happened to them? Like, you know, and, um, I think, I think Shelley actually usually calls when somebody. Yeah, when somebody doesn't show up, they're just like, oh, you know, they never miss and they're, yeah. So it is a, it's a very close knit group, even though it's, it's larger definitely than the, than the 32, 35 people that, that companies or allows for, so.
Thank you.
I think it's really awesome what I guess the library is doing for the community and the asp- I think it's really awesome what I guess the library is doing for the community in the aspect of loneliness and and senior citizens. I think it was my, I would say my grandfather was a widow for seven or eight years. I can't remember exactly, but I it was up in Dyke, right by Cedar Falls. I've never, he was so lonely, but he was always so happy to have visitors. And I think that it's awesome that you guys are are building programs where, you know, if if seniors can't make it, that you can go out and meet them. And and I think that's just, that's awesome. And and I I can't give you guys enough praise for that. I think some of the, some of the best conversations I've ever had with anybody have been with senior citizens. And they're just, they're wise beyond your wildest imagination. And I just think it's it's amazing. And so please keep up the good work. Thank you.
And so I'll share, some of them are just incredibly funny as well. My, one of my favorite things was that's happened in North Liberty was I was covering senior dining over the summer because Cory does summer lunch during the summer. And we have an older woman, I think she's, she just hit ninety. She comes in with an assistant in a wheelchair and she gives me her money and she leans over like to whisper to me and she's just like, I'm just here to raise hell. And they're, they're all very quirky and very fun to be around.
Yes, they are awesome. They are awesome. So thank you. Thank you, both of you. Thank you. And Jenny, thank you, Jenny. You count too. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You, yes, you don't have.
Don't feel like you have to leave.
You don't have to stay for this exciting, she's gotta go back to work.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
All right. Reports.
All right, you ready for the budget report? All right, so we are actually sitting really well. We're at sixty four percent for total library services. Average for this time of year is sixty six. And the non-position personnel services is is more like our travel and things like that. We'll, we'll see more of that start to spike up as we, I'm going to the Public Library Association Conference this next month and some other trips coming up.
Where's that at?
That is in Ohio in Columbus this year.
Oh, nice. Okay. Are you driving or flying?
Flying.
You could drive. It's only eight hours.
Well, it would cost the city a lot more money for me to drive.
Oh, yeah, you'd probably want to charge a mileage on that one.
So, yeah, and then personnel sixty six percent is actually really good for personnel to be right hidden that average. Because as you guys know from previous years, a lot of times our part time especially has been like over. So it's nice to see that Jen has worked really hard with the numbers. And now we actually have some pretty solid data about how many hours we have versus how many we need. So we're, we're working through those things every, seems like we learn more and more all the time. We have two brand new staff that I'll talk about next. If you guys are, do you guys have questions about budget things? Anything from the numbers? Angie, I say it every month, but we, you know, we front load some of like our eBooks. We encumber a lot of funds. So you see some of those big expenditures at the very beginning of the year and then it starts to level itself off. But you see that some numbers will be over a hundred percent or at a hundred percent already. And that's just because we've already purchased from those lines almost everything we've needed. So staffing update, we do have two new part time library assistants. We just filled those. They're both great. They both have like Mac and Haley. They both have come to us with library experience from backgrounds. So they've picked up and jumped right in. It's been fantastic to have a full team, but it was, as I was mentioning to Angie, one of our staff asked if they could talk to us this week. So I'm like, no, I'm not available. But one of our really great part timers, so hopefully that's not what she wants to say, but we'll see.
So with the library assistants, are they just providing support wherever needed or are they connected with specific areas within the library?
So we have, they're, they're, they're all our part time positions. We have one page who all he does is like check in and shelve and help with a few special projects. But mostly he's just checking in and shelving materials. The library assistants are typically frontline, so they're on the front desk. They cover storytimes like on the weekends. They do our Saturday storytimes. They're, they're all, they all audit and train to do those. They cover almost all of our weekend hours. We have one full timer typically on Saturdays and then part timers on Sundays. So we have a library assistant two structure, which they're, the only difference between the library assistant one and two is the library assistant two kind of has that supervisory role of the building, so building supervisor, not supervisory of staff, but of the building itself. So if there's a question or something is going on, they either call us or can address it typically, or they'll call me if they can't address it. But usually they can. For instance, last weekend, there someone was in the library trying to do a petition to get someone on a ballot. And they knew enough to call me and say, is that, that's not okay, right? And I'm like, you're right, that is not okay. You can ask them to not do that there. So so they they get pretty well trained. Kelly, our staff person who does our training, the public services librarian, came in from a nonprofit or from for profit structure and has just a fantastic training background. She built our training manual from scratch basically a few years ago. She's been, gosh, almost five years, I guess now. And has been, does a pretty thorough three week step by step training with every new staff person. They, all the part timers get about fifteen to twenty minutes with each full time staff person. So they can get to know them and their role so they can understand how they fit into our, into the structure and the importance of their positions and support. And yeah, so most of their job is frontline, so they're at the desk. They're doing check in, check out, shelving. They work the youth desk as well, that we have the desk over in the youth area. And then they do help with special projects and processing of materials when the new things, items come in.
Thank you.
Yeah. And then just professional development, I typically will list, just kind of give an Angie and up a little bit of what I, what's going on. So I am going to PLA this next month in Columbus. I am not presenting this year at PLA, so it should be nice. But the Association for Rural and Small Libraries does have a booth there, so I'll be helping with the booth as app for part of that time that I'm there. I just got back, this was actually on a personal thing. I was on vacation, but I did go and present. I I got paid, so I didn't, I took vacation, so it wasn't on library time. I presented on my patron friendly library policies in Buffalo River Regional Library System in Tennessee, just south of Nashville, for about fifteen people, library directors down there. It was interesting. I don't know if I told you guys about it, but I I present quite a bit on inclusive policy. And about two weeks before I went, they called me and told me that I wasn't allowed to use the words equity and inclusion while I was presenting on inclusive policy.
Yeah, how'd that go?
So it went fine. At first I was like, hmm, I might not be going. But we, we worked through it and they asked me to just do more of a practical policy application, a presentation on practical policymaking, but they did allow me to get, I got in some digs where I could and talk about how we do things at our library as long as I structured it, so it was more about our library. So it worked out fine. And then we ended up doing a panel and so that they could have, she mentioned the word outsider a couple of times. She was talking about me coming in and I was like, okay, but it went really well. I was a little like, I'm not sure what to expect, but it went better than expected and they were great. They were very receptive. Pushed back a little on some things, which is perfectly fine. I told them I don't mind that at all. And then I do have a link there you can see, but I did get to go in February also to the Knight Foundation Library Leader Conference, which it was just fantastic. There was a session, they, most of the, it's about sixty people. It's a pretty intimate setting. Almost all huge rural library or urban libraries in in North Liberty. So it was pretty cool, but mostly, mostly they had panels and then breakout discussions from those panels. So they did ask me, John, my friend John, who is part of the planning for that, asked me to lead a breakout with the library director from Seattle on kind of where we are with advocacy in in across the country and in Iowa. And just talking about how we're going to the Capitol and doing the things with advocacy work.
And it sounds like you had a really interesting wide variety of events. Were there any key takeaways or learnings you pulled from those?
Yeah, you know, and actually it was really interesting when you asked Nick about, Nick's a data guy too. He he loves data. So one of the big things was they did have, one of the panels was a group of foundation directors. There's a John Award, who's a director of the Seattle Foundation, Public Library Foundation, actually has leads like a huge network of foundations. So she's trying to build a larger network to support the foundations that are smaller and to support the libraries that don't have foundations to trying to help, help on a larger scale. That's kind of her goal in the long run. But one of the things that resonated there, and then they had a couple of grant funders, so Knight Foundation is a big grant funder. And they've just funded their largest library grant, which was over ten million dollars to build a new library in, I want to say in the South. I can't remember which, which city it was in, but they don't typically do that. And they're just starting to get into libraries. The other partner, and that was the Digital Public Library of America, my friend John Bracken runs that in Chicago. So they talked about the fact that libraries sometimes just say, you should just fund us because we're great. We're great. We're not very good at getting that qualitative data. Qualitative data is much easier for us to gather and a lot of libraries use privacy as a reason to not do that poll for data. But there were some really interesting conversations about how we might go about getting better with getting it. So I really enjoyed that. We also had a whole discussion on AI and the impact it's having on the field, on hiring, on the work that's in the field. You know, we've already seen, definitely seen resume and cover letter submissions that are AI generated, which I think we need to get away from being not a, like at first I was like, I don't know if I like that. They should have to do the work. But but I think we're, we need to wrap our head around that this might be a little bit different time for us. As long as they're doing the research to where they need to, that they know about the library and what our expectations are, I think that's okay, that we can get on board with it. The other thing was the publishing, how it's impacting publishing, which I found really interesting. There was an independent publisher on that panel talking about, they had just spent a lot of money and time and and actually did a fairly significant run of a new book that they published of about a hundred fifty copies or something, which is pretty big for, it had been more than that, but for a small independent publisher. And a few days later, an obviously AI generated book came out on Amazon about the author that was really bizarre and they worked to get it down. But it was quite interesting that they're gonna see these because there are books being generated by AI now. Full books and Amazon seems to be able to publish them. There's not any rules about the publishing of them, but they're working through some of that stuff, nuances that I would not have thought of. And then the other panel that I found really interesting was just talking about where we are in the field and where we're headed. What I found really interesting was that the larger libraries are talking about ten year strategic plans, going back to ten year strategic plans. Our strategic plan is less than three years old and I feel like we could redo it again right now. So I, I think some of that is smaller libraries are more nimble. We're able to change quicker and we do things at a faster rate than a large city, you know, urban library that may have. I think that they probably do have to plan that way, particularly for like their capital projects when they've got ninety branches that they're trying to keep up. So I can see why they were talking about that. But it kind of left me like, huh, do we need to look at that more? And I don't think we do, not in in our libraries. But and the other thing that I always take away from those is just the, how much we're alike. And I've been on this big crusade with the, especially with my new urban pals, my larger library pals is just, how do we get better at bridging? We bridge really well to our communities. Libraries are really good at bridging to, as you heard tonight, to the folks in our communities. We don't do very well as a profession with bridging among ourselves. We don't, there's kind of a mean girl attitude in libraries. Some, in some places, it's sort of interesting. Not everyone, but there is definitely a little bit of it. So.
Thank you.
It was the Miami Foundation.
It's the Knight Foundation. They, they're just located in Miami.
They're the one that got ten million dollars.
They're the ones that gave, oh, they gave the ten million, yeah.
That's insane. Anyways, I apologize.
Yeah, they've got, no, they've got some, they, they, and then they also do a media conference back to back with that. I wished I could have stuck around because I think I had a lot of, there are quite a few of the librarians did stick around. And they have media folks from all over the world. They did, we did have people from Canada and Denmark at our conference as well. But the media conference had folks from all over the world talking about media and the impact it has. And I think that there's some so much correlation between the two. Plus they have a journalism degree, so I was like, ooh. And they, they, they would have paid for me to stick around for it, but I had, I felt like I needed to get back to work here, so I did not. I might build it in next year, though. And then just advocacy, I traveled to the Capitol for legislative day on March fifth. There was about a hundred fifty library workers, trustees and other advocates there. The first time we had two kiddos with their parents there, little ones advocating for libraries. I did not, typically our legislators are super supportive and I didn't, I only saw one or two of our legislators. I put in notes to all of them, which is fine. We talk pretty regularly. They were, they were in meetings. So one of them sent in one of his workers to visit with us for a minute. And the other two came in and said briefly like, hello, I gotta go. And that was all we got, we had for our table. I think there were quite a few who stopped in. But we typically meet at the Capitol. We get to use the library, the law library, which is a beautiful, beautiful facility. And so we break out into our groups by district and meet with our representatives among the, in the different, we have six districts in Iowa. So it was nice to, to have the chance to just share our advocacy plan with them and talk a little bit more about libraries. We did have, one of the good things that we did make headway on was Sam Helmick from Iowa City that some of you have met, talked with Representative Taylor from La Marz. And he's actually married to a librarian, but he introduced an eBook bill that'll kind of, is gonna be a help to libraries if it passes. So we're pretty excited about that headway that we were able to make. And then just an update on the library contribution drive, we just sent that out in February. We've had two hundred fifty dollars in donations to the endowment. And then I just wanted to encourage everybody here, if you haven't had a chance to send yours in or if you need a form, I'd be happy to get you one. We'd love to see full participation from the board in whatever, whatever level is comfortable for you. And then the friends have, actually I put fifteen hundred, but I think it's about sixteen hundred now, so we got another one. They'll continue to, we get money trickling in throughout the year from these, this, but kind of front loaded here. And then we'll see more coming a few a week, I would guess. Typically, they pick the friends and I think that's just because they know that money is immediate for us, which is nice that they're being thoughtful. One person did send two separate checks, one for the endowment and one for the friends, so that was nice.
On that one, in terms of having a hundred percent giving board, will they count it for grant applications and things like that? If the contributions are going to the community foundation as opposed to the library itself?
You know, I don't know that they do. I just think the optics of it looks nice. And like I said, but I don't think, I don't know that we run into any grants so far, but we're. So grant wise, we have not had in the past a lot of grant writing done, partly just because we didn't have any staff for it. And as our staff have grown, I have, we have now three people who are dedicated. A piece, piece of their job is dedicated to grant writing. So we've actually have, I believe, I want to say that this year alone, we're about thirty five thousand in grants so far. So that's about the, this is the best year for us and about so far since twenty one or twenty, we're at about sixty eight thousand, I think. So we've been doing pretty well with some of those grants, but that I do not know. That's a good question.
So let us know, because I feel like that, I advise grant makers and that's one of the metrics that often get looked at. And I don't know that if you could answer truthfully, yes, that your advisory board is a hundred percent giving board if the giving is going through the endowment.
And if it went to the friends, would it?
Probably not. So I don't know if we can make a small donation to the library itself, or maybe it's just a qualifier in those grant applications to the extent that's a question as to the fact that it goes to the endowment. Is there a goal for the endowment for twenty twenty four?
We don't have like any number.
No goals, just kind of any. No goals, just kind of anything is good at this point.
Whatever we get. Honestly, when the, I started to tell you this story and I didn't finish it. But our, the, the endowment started because one of our board members was just really thought we should have an endowment. And really, or a, or a foundation. And the foundation is obviously a, a much larger thing to tackle. So we, at the time, with our $11,000 that we had, we, I thought the endowment made sense. It makes sense for a small library like ours to have someone else managing it like the, like the foundation. So that's why we went that route. And we've never had like any significant goals with it. Just kind of whatever we get, we're happy. So far.
I wonder if at some point it would make sense to include in your senior programming, a estate planning and planned giving opportunity presentation.
That's a good idea. Yeah. I like it.
For opportunities to continue endowing the senior program for those who are interested.
Oh, that's a great idea. I'm taking notes on my phone while I'm trying to do this presentation. So the next thing I was going to mention to you guys was our library in-service day. Is coming up in April. The, and we do an in-service every year, at least one and sometimes two. The plan is to do one in the fall on security. We have a library security guard from Illinois who's been in touch with me about potentially coming to present to us, who I met through the American Library Association. And he has offered, I mean, he said he would come for little to no money and just basically mileage. So we're pretty excited since he works directly for a library and not, he's not like a contract security guard. He works for the library. So it's kind of cool. We are, all of our library staff is encouraged to attend. All the full timers, I believe, are planning to attend. And I, we always invite all the part timers. Some of them have full-time jobs elsewhere, so they aren't able. But others, I think at least a couple have already indicated that they want to come. And then the rec and community relations staff are invited as well. I've heard from a couple of people that are coming. And then I just wanted to extend that invitation as well to you guys. I've, I did include the agenda here. Kelly and Danny from our staff will be presenting on working with neurodivergent individuals and people in crisis. The main piece of that is they're going to also talk about working with neurodivergent staff. So working with other staff who may be neurodivergent. And then United Action for Youth is coming back to do a program for us on building and keeping relationships with teens. This is a refresher that we do pretty regularly with United Action for Youth because we know that that is, the kiddos are super, we want them to feel super welcome in the library. And some of those kids, we may be the only friendly face they see all day or the best experience they're having during the day. So it's important for us to have, make sure that they know that we like having them there. And also that we're providing consistent structure in how we deliver our, both our services, but also when we need to ask them to settle down. So they come and they are like unicorns. They're magical. I wish I could just channel them into my brain. And it often, that's things that they teach us also relate to any patron that we're working with. So then we do, I do lunch during that. It's part of the, part of the program. And then Sam Helmick from Iowa City is coming to do a presentation on freedom to read during the afternoon. So we will have plenty going on that day. If anybody is interested, just let me know and I'll put you down.
If, if we take you up on your invitation, may we be excused from Agenda Item E?
You can be excused from, yes, you don't have to help clean up the workroom or work later on. You can leave at 2:30.
Very good.
You can come for one or all the sessions.
Thank you.
And does anyone have any questions on those staff reports?
No, but I would go back to the hearing loop grant.
Yes.
I, I looked up that technology when I saw that this afternoon, and that's magical. That's amazing.
Yeah, it's going to be wonderful. So we've, Jen had asked to look into that. We've been kind of trying to do this for a few years. And we'd been in touch with a couple of business companies to get quotes on it. And they told us completely different installation processes. And of course, not knowing what we're doing, it's like, we're going, um, okay, which is right. So we're learning, we've been learning and Jen's learned quite a bit about it. And we will, I think Iowa City does have a room that's, has a hearing loop. I'm not sure how many other facilities in Johnson County actually have that ability. So we're pretty excited to add that to the meeting rooms. And then of course, I think I mentioned it to you guys before, but we do, we're getting the grant to put the open to handicap buttons for the restroom doors as well from the same LTC grants. I'm always, when I'm putting in all the staff reports, I'm always amazed at all the things. So any questions?
Nope.
All right. I can move on then just to strategic plan. If that's okay with you guys. So I did have staff go through the strategic plan and add some updates. So anything that you see, most of it's in blue. I think if they got the idea that it was in blue, not all of them maybe, just some of the updates that we have. One of the things that I mentioned, as I mentioned, that I thought we needed to take another look at refreshing this, partly because we have a lot of things that we've already succeeded in doing, which is amazing. But also because we have new staff on board. Nick is new, comes from a different vantage point than Amy, who was our former adult services librarian. And Kayla, who's our youth services librarian and who replaced or took over for Aaron when Aaron left us to move out of state. A couple of these things, so like the Culture City grant that we got to do Culture City and, which is a sensory friendly, built to make the whole community center sensory friendly. Kayla did not even know about that when Aaron left. So I went to Kayla and said, hey, what's been going, have you done anything with Culture City? And she was like, what's that? So just so it's, it feels like they have some ownership in it. I think we're, we're working through how, what, what's a good process to go back? We're really proud of this strategic plan. And I'm mostly proud when you see that it's actually an accountable plan. We've, we've done a lot of things on it in my time in libraries. And it's all been in North Liberty for 20 plus years. This is the first strategic plan that we've had that I feel that we've actually really made a lot of ground, broken, you know, made ground and done a lot. So I, I don't want to lose the concept behind it, but I do think we could do some things. And already like, for instance, the social worker was something that I was really pushing for a few years ago. And I have just in the time, just the experience of going to like the, the Institute for Museum and Library Services meetings. And this, the meeting within Miami have come to a different conclusion. And that is that our small and rural library in Iowa does not need a full-time social worker. What we need is to be equipped to handle micro-interactions with patrons when they come in. Nick spent probably five to eight hours last week working with individual patrons who needed help filling out forms. And it's tiring and I don't want him to burn out. I don't want any staff person, one staff person to burn out. But the stuff that he, it's pretty intricate, the work that he's doing. And to train more than one staff person is going to be hard too. Because the forms change and they're hard, they're pretty detailed forms. Even he was like, I don't know how much sense it makes for me to train someone else to do it. So, but last week he was tired. So we want to cushion that. We want to make sure that our staff feel taken care of, that they feel comfortable, that they feel like they can take a break. So what we talked about last week was you can tell a patron, I can give you 30 minutes today. And you can limit, limit it that way so that you're protecting yourself from burnout. Or, you know, we have some pretty needy patrons who come in and maybe just want to talk for 45 minutes or an hour. And I'm, we were trying to talk about how we can do some gentle handoffs with those folks and still make them feel heard and respected when they're here. So training our staff and having them all ready from the part timers through the full timers is, is my goal, new goal. I haven't figured out how to word all that yet, but that's it in a gist.
So with that change in strategic planning goal, will that, will the professional development budget shift to provide some of that support to full and part-time staff to accommodate that skill set?
So we do a number of different things. We have, we subscribe to training from, it's kind of a misnomer, but Ryan Dowd homelessness training is what it's called. It's actually a lot more than just homelessness training. Last, and we subscribe to it so everyone on staff gets access to all the trainings he offers for free. He has a core training that's a day long, basically a day long if you're with him. Or you can do it, you know, asynchronously, asynchronously online. All staff on our team are required to take that training, including our part timers, because it's just really about how to, how to handle people and what to do in certain situations and how to keep yourself safe if you're in a potentially volatile situation. And then he does monthly trainings on different topics. So last week, his training was a conversation with a trans male man named Ben Green, who is an expert in transgender and LGBTQ plus community. And, and he was amazing. Nick's already been in touch with them to see if he'll come to our library. I was like, please try to get him here because I want to just fangirl a little bit because he was so cool. But so we, we do some of that. We, our friends will help. Like I mentioned, our friends have agreed to pay for me to go to the American Library Association Conference in San Diego in June. I am, I have been invited to speak at that conference with, on a panel, so.
Congratulations.
Thank you. I'm pretty excited. So, but they've agreed to pay for it. So we try to stretch dollars that way. Will, so when I, the long story is, yes, I hope so. But right now with the way the budget looked for municipalities, it's going to be a slow uphill climb. I have tried to build that budget up. We, right now it's about $10,000 a year. So we do a lot of free online training. And that's, that's, all the trainings on the April 19th are free. Lunch is the only thing we'll pay for and staff time. So things, we're pretty creative in that way. And then Kelly, since she does have some training, a training background. For instance, she, I watched a thing on self-care and burnout last week. And so Kelly, I told Kelly about it. She's picked it up. She's going to watch it so that she can then use that to help deliver that training to our other staff. And then we have Nisha Academy, which is for, it has an, it has a front-facing patron training component, but it also has an internal one that we can upload video and the content. So all of our training for our onboarding and then other training is uploaded there. So a lot of our stuff's online. But I also like the personal in-person stuff. So looking around for less expensive avenues is. But we also support any staff going. If, if staff wants to do training, I'll figure out a way to pay for it. Pretty much any team member. Any questions about the strategic plan other than those? I mean, you can just see some of the things we've already done. And I know Nick has some ideas. I know the Raspberry Pis, he says are not probably a good option for us.
Well, the, the way technology has worked out for, for, for the lending library in our experience, no, probably.
Yeah. Right. Scott has helped, helped with this strategic plan. He was involved in the process with us, which was great. Once we figure out what we're going to do to do this new version of it. I mean, it's not going to change a lot, but I, the strategic plan is a living, breathing document anyway. So we'll just update it. And once I have something in my hands, I will share it. I will also invite folks to join us in that if we decide to do more than that.
So maybe without the Raspberry Pis, maybe more cake pans.
There you go. No more cake pans.
I love cake pans.
The other document for the tonight is the mission statement. I am going to just straight up tell you that we have not looked at it. Other than to say that, yes, we think it needs to do, we need to do some work on it. I would like to see it, some literacy component added to it.
I agree with that. Saw that you had Kelly's note on there.
Yes. Those are the things we've had on, and that note has been on there for a while. So it is on our radar. I have talked to the staff about, at the last staff meeting about what we think the best route to take is to do a new mission statement. There is sort of a step-by-step mission statement, easy mission statement revamp online that I've used in the past. Last time we did this, we had one of our board members come and kind of moderate it. Artis and, and help us with the whole process. So more to come on that by next year at this time. No, hopefully before that. I would like to see it before that. And so I would just bring it back to you guys when it's ready. And, or, and, and or if anyone would like to be involved, I would be happy to loop you in.
Perfect. Perfect. Anything else you want to add on that?
Nope. I think there's not, you guys don't have to vote on anything with those. So you can just, we can just hop on if you want to. What is old business that's not on the agenda on here? But is on, was on the agenda that I sent them. So I don't know what happened there.
I've got it on mine.
It's on yours. It's just not on mine. Interesting.
Wait.
Okay.
I downloaded mine, I think just earlier today.
Okay. Well, maybe that's, yeah, because, well, yeah, because I updated it and I sent an updated version, but they must have snagged the old one before I sent the new one. So as I mentioned last month, I would like you guys to consider just doing away with the statement of concern. What that would look like was this will just be removed from the manual. The language in it, as the reason the collection development policy is in here is because that, that first section that is tracked kind of does, does that, sets the structure for doing this. As I mentioned, historically Iowa City has never had a statement of concern. They're kind of my model for this. And then my new friend in Key West, who reached out to me when I proposed this on an American Library Association group about it, has already, they've already removed theirs. The goal, I think in the long run, would be for us to see this go across the, kind of, Peter Bromberg from Every Library, who is my, kind of the proponent of this whole idea. And I have talked about potentially writing a, an article on it for the American Library Association Magazine. And maybe doing a presentation on it as well to try to get some traction across the country for folks to see this as an option. I don't, I think we use examples of, for instance, you don't have a, we don't have a form that says you can come in and tell us that you don't like our chairs. You don't, you want us to get new chairs. You know, the highway folks don't have forms that say if you don't like where the sign is placed, you can give us a form to fill out the sign. So we don't, the idea is that this is our area of expertise and we know the collection, so we're not going to remove a material just because you don't like it. And that, so the, then the structure in the, or the things that I put in the collection development policy are just supporting, doing that. So I, I did it a little differently and I don't know what you guys think. Typically, I just have the approved at the bottom. I just did a revised in March because it'll come back up in October again for review. So I just did, I thought for now it would be a good way to just kind of note that we'd done that revision. If you guys are all right, if you guys agree to that tonight. And then what will happen is tomorrow, if this is approved, I'll take it back to Melanie. We already have a form, a comment form on the website. We'll add a dropdown item to that that just says feedback. And then we're going to just say we welcome your feedback. We hope that you enjoy the services we provide as much as we enjoy providing them. And oh yes, if you have compliments, please leave those here too. Rather than creating a whole new form, we're just going to add on one item to that form so that we're not mucking people up with 10 different forms on our website.
Without the quorum, will we be able to do that tonight?
You actually have a quorum for that.
We didn't have for the.
You just have a quorum for the other because Jack was not here in January and Angie wasn't here in January. So there's only two of you.
So I'm just curious, how, how often has the form been used in the past?
Never.
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 So it's not a practical, highly utilized.
Correct. It's never been used. I think some, one person has asked for it and never returned it.
Okay. And I, I mentioned this earlier when we talked today, but I think my only concern is more from a staff standpoint in terms of sometimes it's nice to be able to blame a form rather than. in terms of sometimes it's nice to be able to blame a form rather than having to have a, a tough discussion and just wanting to make sure that you feel comfortable, that your staff have the tools that they need to respond to complaints without having the ability to refer to a form whether or not it gets filled out.
Yeah, I mean, for the most part, I don't think any, the staff typically are not going to go to the form first. A lot of times when folks come in, they just want to be heard. Like, um, we did have someone come in and want to talk about one of our databases and was upset about something. And Jen, I was in a meeting, so Jen got to listen to them. But, um, they just really, I think, wanted to be heard. Once they were heard, they felt okay about it. And as long as, I, I think that's the piece that we train our staff on, um, the most, is to make sure that they know that they, they're not just going to, that we're not creating an argument. Everybody's free to have their opinion. Um, and just as, I think there's a lot of learning, um, to that anyway, just even our full-time staff. And I'll just, as an aside, um, we had, uh, we have these teen litter crates that we give out that have books in them. And we, we did one on Black Lives Matter a few years ago. And a parent came in and said that they didn't want that. They gave it back, the box, and they gave the books that were free to the, that they, that his children had chosen. Um, and he didn't want them. And my staff was really upset. They're like, what do we do? I said, well, you respect the parent's decision, just as we want them to respect that we provide materials for all people. We respect what happens in their home. We might not agree with it, but we don't get to say what they do as much as we don't love it. Um, but what we can do is say, here's some books on how to be a strong, independent human being. Here's some books on critical thinking, um, so that you can still give teens, um, you know, some access to information. You just can't, when the parent says that they don't want them to take that home, then that's not our choice. So it's about constantly doing that training and we do role-playing. Um, Jen, a lot of times will offer to do role-play with staff when we think we're going to, when we, after we talk about maybe a hard conversation that might need to happen, um, we'll, we'll offer to role-play those things with them. And Kelly does, um, Saturday on, once a month, Saturday, uh, staff meetings with the part-time staff so that they follow up from our full-time staff meetings, um, and get whatever is going on and can ask questions and find out things. And she always does about a 20-minute training each time with those two. It's typically on customer service or something to do with policy. So we make sure that we try to get them as many tidbits as we can. Um, and if they're not prepared, they know too, that they can always hand my card, business card to folks and just say, you know, our director's not here, but here's our card and my cell number's on there. And that's okay too, so.
Is that, with the online sort of like comment card, is that, um, anonymous or is there?
No.
Okay.
Absolutely not.
Is there a, um, I mean, is, is follow-up with that person, is that standard? Is that?
Yeah, I mean, I think just as with anything, I'm going to follow up just as I would with, with the form or with anything else. I'm going to have a conversation with them. And, and bottom line is if they want to bring it to you guys or to, you know, beyond that, then that's still going to be their prerogative. Nothing is really changing in that. I'm just removing this piece of this questioning our expertise. Um, really that's what this is about. And I feel like I don't know how, uh, I mean, I don't know, I mean, I do know the history of it. It's, it's been a long thing and people will say, well, it's intellectual freedom. But yes, it is intellectual freedom. It's the right to choose what you want to read and take home, but it's not your right to take home, choose whatever someone else wants to take. So I don't want to take away anybody's voice to, to, to give me feedback anytime. We just want to remove this mechanism to specifically give us feedback on this one thing.
Yeah. All right, so since we have a quorum, do we have a motion to approve?
This would specifically be for the collection development or to remove the collection or the statement of concern?
Remove the statement of concern.
I'll make a motion to remove the statement of concern.
Is there a second?
I will second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nobody else is here, so nay to them. So there will no longer be a, uh, statement of concern.
Do we need a separate motion on the red line to the collection development policy? So, uh, with that, I move to amend the collection development policy to reflect the updates in the board packet.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, you don't know what I'm doing up here. All opposed?
We got this.
There we go. That one's approved as well. I didn't even know that was a thing. Okay. I think that's all the old business. If I'm.
That is all the old business.
Any new business? New business. Okay. Well, in that case, case, excuse me, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I move that we adjourn.
I deny your motion. All right, this meeting is adjourned.